Ready to go? All right, I'll call the meeting to order. We'll have the salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Local call members?
Rusty Tom, Wayne here.
Rusty Wolinski here.
Rusty Carter here.
Chester Derriglack here.
Mary McFattick here.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting, please?
Which one?
Two minutes.
We have two.
Oh, I only have one on my agenda.
It's a special meeting.
Okay. Let's do the regular meeting first. So that motion is for the one on the...
On the 10th.
10th. Any corrections?
We voted.
No, I haven't got it yet. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries and may I have a motion for the budget workshop meeting? Any corrections on that one? All in favor? Aye.
You mark me as exempt.
Yeah, so any exceptions? Yep, Joel.
I am staying.
Motion carries. We have a public hearing on local law number one, 2025, the tax cap override. So may I have a motion to go out of the regular meeting?
Some more.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion to go into the public hearing? May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. So we're now in a public hearing for local law number one for the tax cap override. Do we have any members of the public that want to speak on that?
I know it's a necessary tool.
That's a good way to put it. It is a necessary tool. All right, as there's no other member from the public who wishes to speak on that, may I have a motion to close that public hearing? And a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Motion carries and may I have a motion to go back into our regular meeting?
Some more.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. All right, so I'm going to bump up the new business, the presentation from TDC to now. Thank you so much for coming. So we have Danielle King and Renee McFarlane with us. Danielle is the president and CEO of the Development Corporation and Renee is the director of the Business Development, I think.
Yes.
I got that right? Okay. So I welcome you. We're so excited to have you in the Village of Champlain. Tell us about the TDC.
Happy to be here. Yeah, happy to.
Thank you.
So I have the notes from the presentation I gave at Robery just so I don't go off on any tangents, because I didn't want to. So please feel free to interrupt and ask questions at any time. I don't know how familiar you all are with TDC. Depending on how long you've been in Clinton County, you may know us as the New Industries of Clinton County or Clinton County Area Development Corporation or the Development Corporation of Clinton County. And now we are known simply as TDC and NY. We rebranded in 2020 along with our new administrative offices over on Industrial Boulevard. So TDC is a private, not-for-profit economic development and industrial development organization. So we've been around since 1961. And we are not quasi-governmental, somewhat, we are in no way involved with the state, county, local, or other governments. We have an inventory of about 700,000 square feet of industrial space in Clinton County, primarily in the Plattsburgh area. And we do have just over 100 acres here in the Champlain Industrial Park. We used to have some actual buildings up here in Champlain. We've since sold those. So our mission as an organization is to attract and retain quality jobs and quality investments. So we're not a traditional developer that's just putting up buildings to collect rent checks and sit back and, you know, smoke our cigars. We're just looking to create opportunities for the folks here in the North Country and we do that by creating opportunities through industrial space. So one of those ways is developing on spec. So speculative development is not something those cigar-chomping developers do because you don't really get a return on your investment quickly. So building warehouses is not cheap these days. It's not getting any cheaper either. So we're able to leverage the inventory of buildings that we have from, you know, the past 60-plus years to, you know, in a way subsidize a new tenant coming into a building. So we can keep our rents at market rate, attract companies primarily from Quebec into our region and help them create jobs. So along with being a landlord, we have a couple other arms of our organization. One of those is in workforce development. So, you know, part of creating the jobs is making sure that we have a workforce here in the county that's able to support those organizations and making sure that people know about the opportunities that are there. One of those is through K-12. So we have grant programs for educators and nonprofits who want to support career exploration. So we sponsor events like the Champlain Valley Science Fairs, Shine On. We participate in the Career Connect events that CDES does and Manufacturing Days, just to try to show kids what modern manufacturing is. We also have a formal partnership with CFEs Brilliant Pathways. It's an education nonprofit down in Essex. But they have schools that they partner with through grants. And so they give us the students and we provide the facilities. So business and education don't really speak the same language. They're never going to speak the same language. And so having that liaison has been really helpful. We, every spring, put over 100 10th graders through our manufacturing facilities. You know, NCCS is a great partner there. It's really neat to see, you know, these teenagers walking into a manufacturing facility for the first time because a lot of them have this, like, picture of, like, the Industrial Revolution and all this is going to be so, like, dirty and dingy. And then you put them in, like, Norse titanium where it's, like, all just metal and open air and just collaborative, you know, all these young engineers that are really motivated walking around. And it's, you can see their perception really starting to change. Or my favorite is when you have the 16-year-old boy sitting in the conference room at Canton Michelin and, you know, his arms kind of crossed, like, oh, I gotta go to school for the day, but whatever. And they do the presentation about, you know, their product and they show these really high-end marketing videos and they're shot on Shazy Lake and Chedega Lake. And they're like, wait, I drive my snowmobile out there. And then they learn that, you know, upwards of 98% of the snowmobile tracks in the world are manufactured there in Plattsburgh. And it's just changing that perception of you have to leave here to be successful because I don't think that's always the case. And, you know, having these opportunities be presented in a way that it's not like a fallback option, like, oh, my safety is to stay here. It's, there are chances to work for, like, global companies with really good opportunities of advancement and, you know, good salaries where you can have a good life and career here in the North Country. So that's, you know, one of the big pieces of that. And then also with our grant program, we also support the workforce. So our tenants and other employers in the park, retaining employees is really tricky, especially in that kind of industrial assembly environment. You know, sometimes folks are, you know, they're leaving for, you know, 50 cents more an hour or I can't keep people. And it's like, okay, well, let's take a look at how you're investing in your workforce and why they'd want to stay. And so we provide grants for our employers to help them to train and upskill the employees they have to try to keep them in the parks and keep them invested in what they're doing. So we will reimburse up to 80% of training costs. So if they have an employee who they really want to make a supervisor or they want to move into a different department but they don't have the right skills, we're able to help them with the cost of that training. So it's, it's never dull. And I'd be remiss if I didn't mention our board. So TDC is governed by a board of directors. We currently have about 26 comprised of business leaders from around the county, folks in industry, construction, banking, investments, a lot of really fantastic leaders in our organization. And so we are very grateful for their advisement and their commitment to TDC and helping our mission move forward. All right, Renee. This is why I bring the slideshow because I already went off on one tangent. Okay, so like I said, TDC came about 1961. There were a group of business folks in Clinton County that said, you know, we need more opportunities here. We need more companies here. And so they just grassroots, got together and started a, you know, economic development marketing where they build boards and they were bringing in site selectors and just trying to sell the region and why it's a great place to do business. So of course, our region's main attraction is that proximity. You know, proximity to Canada, the universities and, you know, the 87 corridor down, less than a day's drive from the vast majority of the US population. And so they thought, hey, we'll sell buildings and that'll help to, you know, fund what we're doing. And so they built buildings and then they realized our asset is being that really great lower risk for step into the US market. So a company in Canada is saying, hey, we really want access to the US market. We want an opportunity to grow. But buying real estate is a big step. So it gives them the opportunity to lease a space, come down and visit the plant and be back up in Montreal in time for dinner. And so that's when TDC really transitioned into this lease model. And from there, they started building and leasing properties. And now here we are, 19 buildings, over 700,000 square feet. And we're still growing. We've put up, most recently, 60,000 square foot building was finished last year. And that was, started as a spec build. And through the relationships with our tenants, we knew that we had our longest-standing tenant, Mediska Pharmaceuticals, been with TDC since, pretty much, they came to Plattsburgh. This year is 30 years they've been with us. And they started in a very small footprint and they've just, you know, gradually grown, purchased a building from TDC. Then they came back and leased more space. And now they've been able to consolidate into this really high-tech, impressive pharmaceutical warehouse because we knew they wanted a new building. And so they were able to get in at the ground level and really customize what was just going to be, you know, a spec build to try to get more companies here. And so that's really where our value is, is these relationships we build with the companies. And we give them the opportunity to, hey, you want to grow? You can break your lease and move into another TDC building, absolutely. You know, we want to see these companies create more jobs and continue to invest here in the region. So that's what's happening in the industrial park piece. For our land here in the Champlain Industrial Park, this is, you know, talk about proximity and access. You know, we really market the land in the Champlain Industrial Park as the gateway to Canada and vice versa. And so it's a really attractive opportunity for folks that want to build. And when you get a company that wants to build something, like, they're already invested because it's a, that's a big investment. It's a big step. So we are really motivated to being that kind of first step in connection. So a company comes in and they have interest, whether they come to us directly or through one of our partners. You know, we work closely with, you know, all the economic development organizations, the county, the Chamber, other commercial brokers in the region. And we help to be their resource. So helping them to find different incentives, connecting them with the IDA and so that they know how they can make this project successful and to bring jobs here to the park. And so we still have quite a bit of land. And with that new rebranding, we have a nice shiny new website that we're able to create content and share back on our social media channels and all of our activities. So, okay. Let me see. It's a lot of talk. Does anybody have any questions before I continue?
Well, what about workforce numbers? Is that, is that a big challenge?
It's an ever-changing conversation. So I think, you know, with the transition from Milwet and Microbird, I think there was this expectation there was going to be a big influx of folks. And, you know, thankfully, that's not the case. But even so, I think the conversation isn't just, are there enough people? It's, you know, unemployment. Unemployment is such a small piece of the workforce puzzle. It's really that labor force participation. So there are people around here, but there's a barrier and a reason that they're not in the workforce. And so for some, that's childcare.
Yeah.
You know, it's always, since I've been at TDC and even when I was at the Chamber, it's been a big conversation is about, you know, how we can create avenues for folks to overcome that barrier. And so, you know, TDC participates in a lot of those conversations about how we can increase and improve access to affordable, certified, quality childcare. That certified piece is where folks can get the financial support because families can make a good living and they've raised the threshold so much that they could really access these subsidies to pay for almost all of their childcare. But the story isn't told enough and so a lot of folks don't know. But we work closely with the Workforce Development Board, Workforce Development Institute on training and just making sure that our employers have, you know, a way to access employees if they want to grow. And then helping to provide data on, okay, we need to hire more people or we're having trouble retaining what, what isn't working. And so we have a, you know, software where we can take a look at everything from how many people within a certain drive time are accessible, what the skills gaps are, what the average ranges are, and really give them a complete picture so that they can inform their hiring decisions. Okay, thank you. On the same workforce, you know, piece of the puzzle, we try to create a sense of community within the industrial parks. So we bring in, we have a program called Park Perks where we'll bring in food trucks in the summertime or back when the High Peaks Coffee Truck was around. Still to be determined if she's coming back. Getting very nervous. She's very popular at our office. But just to try to give an opportunity for, you know, the employees in those buildings to, you know, get out into the sunshine for, you know, in 15, 20 minutes and see people coming from all over. It was really neat. We've held them a couple of different locations around the park. And when we held one at TDC's offices, we had, there was the plant truck and the coffee. And then we had the Food Dude's food truck was set up. And we had people walking down from, you know, Monahan and Norse and they were sitting out at our back patio and having lunch. And it was just a really great sense of unity that you don't always see with those, you know, manufacturing or industrial type. And so we try to create those opportunities everywhere we can. And we also try to share stories within the park that aren't always the faces and the voices being elevated. So if you follow us on Facebook, you've seen enough of my face for the past couple of weeks to get your fill. So we have a program called Groundbreakers where we had asked for submissions for people that are working in our community that have a great story to tell and are making a difference. And they're just not the ones that you've... So we've been able to list those stories up. Our first round, we had three, Jessica from the Town of Plattsburgh Planning Department, Heather Tucker, who's the plant manager at one of our tenant locations, who, you know, went to college, started it, wasn't a good fit, started as an assembler and worked her way up to plant manager. And then a young man that went through the Ready for Real program. So he actually had, he didn't finish high school, struggling, went through this, the Ready for Real program and got a job at Schluter Systems and is, like, working his way through everything. And so he did a testimonial. The people that nominated them did testimonials. And it was a really good way to kind of pull these stories out of the industrial park and to show students the different paths that are out there. So workforce, we touched on Manufacturing Experience Day. Touch on those. Anything?
I think you did it, Buzz. I have one more question. Yeah, no, absolutely. Transportation. Yeah. So up here, we have a lot of people that don't have cars or don't have cars that work very well. Yep. Is there any kind of, I don't know, system to bus people to different places? Or have you...
There has to be because I know that there are pretty big cohorts of employees from Franklin County that make their way over to Plattsburgh for a couple of the facilities. I don't have the exact information on whether that's through the facilities themselves or if that's a DSS service. But I have to imagine there is a way to have that service from the northern tier down into, into Plattsburgh. I've also heard of some rideshare programs. Enterprise had one. And we've had kind of a surface-level understanding of how those work. We haven't been able to get them off the ground yet, but it's not to say that it's not an opportunity for down the road.
Okay.
Clinton County public transit, in some ways, is driven by demand. So if you've got a concentration of folks who need to make it here, there, wherever they may be, it may make sense to reach out to CCTT and let them know that there may be a demand for times, locations, things like that.
Okay. The board has any questions? Wow. Thank you so much.
No, thank you for the opportunity. You're really informative.
Keep up the good work.
So there's some information about our grant programs. These pages are double-sided to represent each of the programs. And I'll just leave that here with some of my cards in case anyone needs to get ahold of us.
All right.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks for coming all the way to Champlain.
So I'm hurrying.
Yeah. How come we're there? Thank you so much.
See you, Dani.
Take care. Okay, so we're on, let's see here, Presentation, Petition, Communications, and General Question, period, for members of the community.
That would be me, huh?
That is you. Welcome.
Thanks for hosting that. I'm hoping to have them next month at our board meeting. There's a lot more to TDC than ECI. I think that's great that we're starting, she's starting to push this out all over so people understand our organization better.
Yeah.
I just saw what I could say, really.
Okay, well, thanks for coming. It's nice to, it's nice to have a member of the community. Next, we have the report from the code enforcement officer. I did, I did copy that for you. I don't know if you had a chance to look it over. I mean, it is winter and so there's not, there's not too much. And I gave you, you know, the outside town and the Rousas Point one. So you have to look for the village ones. Does anyone have any questions at all? I can pass on to Chris.
Doesn't say. Not many on this one?
No.
Couple.
Yeah. Yeah.
Compared to a couple months ago.
Yeah.
So is that it? No questions? All right. Here's my report. Sorry, it's a little bit lengthy. Good evening and welcome to the Village of Champlain Board Trustees Meeting. It looks, well, when I wrote this, it looked like winter was finally releasing its grip on us. And we got that snow this morning. Anyway, with warmer temperatures and snow and ice receding, once again, I thank the DPW crew for doing their best to keep the streets and sidewalks safe for passage. Many of you have probably seen the survey from the Clinton County Health Department regarding food waste. This is an effort to reduce food waste in the landfills and turning it into compost, thus reducing the amount of methane gas released into the atmosphere. The village is considering offering a collection site if enough residents would participate in this practice. Please complete the short survey, which takes less than five minutes, online on the Village of Champlain Facebook page or you can pick up a paper copy here at the office. I'm well aware that many of us have been receiving staggering bills from NISIG, which are quite simply not affordable. People have told me that they are afraid that their power will be cut off and they will be sitting in the dark with no heat. I have written to NISIG demanding that they address this problem. There is a public meeting scheduled on Wednesday, March 19, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at Beekman Town Town Hall on the Spellman Road. Please try to attend. Also, call NISIG to see if there are mistakes on your bill because I have heard that they have, some people have had their bills adjusted and ask for another reading. Something has to be done about this. Here are a few dates to remember. Village election day is March 18, from noon until 9:00 p.m. Please come vote. There will be a virtual showing of underwater archaeology of Lake Champlain in partnership with the County Historical Society at the Red Canoe on March 25. Oh dear, I forgot the time. I will put it, I'll put it online. There is no cost and it will be open to all who wish to attend. Slow Art Day is supposed to take place on April 5 at the Champlain Meeting House. And we have done this for years, probably 10 years. And I'm having trouble finding the artists. So we always do an American one and a Canadian one. I cannot find a Canadian one who will come. And I have, I have a request out to an American one. So I may have to cancel this. Earth Day and Arbor Day will be celebrated on April 26. And I'll tell you more about that event next month. Oh, and we got, we got recertified as a Tree City USA. The flag is right back there. And this is the seventh year that we've been recognized. And we will be planting some trees this year. I've been able to attend several events sponsored by the North Country Chamber of Commerce, including the State of the County on March 4, where it was explained that business confidence remains high in the county. Some major concerns are housing, childcare, and new developments. On March 6, I went to the breakfast with our state legislators in which the main topics were tariffs on Canada and the economic consequences of those, as well as the strong feeling of hurt that many are feeling right across the border. We also listened to the legislators talk about the correction officer strike. In addition to the Chamber events, I was able to go to the State of the State address in Albany where the proposed budget is unveiled. It's just the proposed budget. It shows the priorities of the State of New York. In particular, we were looking for details concerning the North Country. And on March 4, I traveled with several people from the area to the NICOM and the Town Association to Lobby Day in Albany, which is bipartisan advocacy from the cities, towns, and villages. The key issues were AIM funding, CHIPS money, and infrastructure support. I continue to work very closely with many agencies, county, the county and state offices to improve lives in our area. As a small business owner, an elected official, and as a citizen, I strive to make positive differences in this community. Whatever hat I am wearing, I will be looking out for our residents. In closing, I ask you all to support all the local businesses whose livelihood depends on our support. Check on your neighbors. Some of them are struggling. Let's be less quick to criticize and quicker to compliment and offer solutions. As always, please reach out to me or the office if you have concerns, suggestions, or questions. We are all working for you and want your input. Thank you. A report from the trustees. Kim?
I met with Tim Sapinski, I think I'm saying his name correctly, today regarding the tax rule. Starting to look, June will be here before we know it to start working on the year-end for the Water Board Report. Him and I are going to work closely together to come up with a way so I do not have to go through 220 pages of paper. He has said that he probably can do it just about any way that I want. So it should make it a lot easier. He's going to call me when he comes up with some suggestions and we'll go from there.
That's great.
Yeah, that'll hopefully help. If not, we'll be back to going through 220 pages of paper.
Anything else? Thank you very much. Nikki?
I don't have a whole lot, but I do suggest or encourage our community to make it to the Champlain Memorial Lab Facebook page. There are a few events already set up. There is a Home Energy Opportunity Presentation this Wednesday at 4:00. And she has an aquatic invasive plants presentation next Tuesday at 1:30. On April 5, we have again our annual Easter Bunny event where we have someone volunteering to dress up as the Easter Bunny. We have a few raffle baskets and we'll have little activities for kids. And chocolates, but uh parents can come and just get a picture with their phone, with their kids and the Easter bunny.
What time is that on the fifth?
That is at, oh, it's ten to one.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's Saturday, so it's our full open hours that day. And she's got a few other things set up for um. There's one in the end of April and then she's working on the summer programming, so we have a wild, wild live. Experience coming up, that's in the summer. So, yeah, come visit her library, I mean, she's, she's definitely doing what she can to get, encourage people to come in. I also wanna say congratulations to all the athletes of the Northeastern, Clinton Central School. Both varsity girls and boys went to sectionals, the cheer team went to sectionals for, yeah, states, I don't remember what it was, but. Cheer this year have done a really great job, they've won a few awards in their competitions. Rifle again came in second place.
Oh yeah.
Bowling had their sectionals, hockey, and we have a student who is on a wrestling team. That has made it to states, so yeah, it's pretty cool to see. Have any athletes, you know, participate each year and, and go as far as they did, so congratulations to them. And we just had our North Country Model UN this past week. That was pretty impressive.
Yeah, boy, that's a long standing program.
Yeah, it is, and there's a lot of schools, fifteen schools I think participate in that. And I just happened to be in the building for a training that day, so I got to see some of it and it's. They do a great job running it, but kids do it all, so it was pretty impressive. I love kids.
Yeah.
Thanks Nikki.
Chuck?
Oh, I don't want anything.
Joel?
Same, nothing on form.
Alright, report from the clerk treasurer.
Okay, we had a water and sewer billing. Water was seventy thousand nine eleven twenty-five. And sewer was seventy thousand six thirteen sixty-seven. We also have some transfers to do before the warrant. And tough month.
It sure has.
Do you want to do all the transfers at once?
Yeah, why don't we do them all at once?
Transfers to A fourteen twenty point one law. Seventeen hundred and fifty-one dollars from A ninety ten point eight retirement, one thousand seven hundred and fifty-one dollars. To A forty ten twenty-four public health contractual, thirty-three dollars. From A ninety ten point eight retirement, thirty-three dollars. To A eighty ten point one code enforcement personal services, five hundred and twenty-six dollars. From A ninety ten point eight retirement, five hundred and twenty-six dollars. To eighty twenty point four planning contractual, twenty-eight dollars. From A ninety ten point eight retirement, twenty-eight dollars. To F fourteen twenty point one law personal services, seven hundred and one dollars. From F ninety ten point eight retirement, seven hundred and one dollars. To F eighty three twenty point four source of supply contractual, four thousand dollars. From F eighty three forty point two transmission and distribution equipment, four thousand dollars. To G fourteen twenty point one law personal services, one thousand fifty-one dollars. From G eighty, from G ninety ten point eight retirement, one thousand fifty-one dollars.
We have a motion to approve these transfers.
So move.
In a second?
Second.
Discussion? Questions? Anyone want further explanation?
Yeah, all, all of these law services, what are, what are those for?
We had excessive planning and zoning.
Yeah.
More than we normally.
I noticed that in the, in the warrant.
So every time he was here.
But it's just essential that he be here, it's, it's complicated stuff and.
Yeah, and then the other, the, the other big one for source of supply, that's, that's the um. Electricity at the water plant because those bills have been outrageous. I did more than what we, than we needed to cover, so hopefully it's gonna cover us through the next two months.
Any other questions? Alright, roll call.
Trustee Tremblay.
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Herzog.
Aye.
Mayor McFetrich.
Aye.
Did you want to do those other two or do after that?
Let's do those after.
After the warrant?
Yeah, let's go after, do it after the warrant.
So, we have additional invoices for the warrant. The additional invoices are six thousand nine hundred and eighty-six dollars and two cents for a total warrant of thirty-three thousand one oh two oh six.
We have a motion to approve the warrant with the additional invoices. So move. In a second?
Second.
Alright, discussion? I mean, you see those? The.
What are the, what are the zones for the districts, why are they broken up into two different?
The lighting districts?
The lighting district.
Other ones over like. Trying to think, over on Butternut, the smaller pavement and the other ones.
The two lighting district bills on the additional.
I think the one is over near Kimpecks, right?
Yes, one, yeah, yeah, then there's that smaller one over there and then the other ones.
Rest of.
The rest of them around the village.
Any other questions, board members? Roll call.
Trustee Tremblay.
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Herzog.
Aye.
Mayor McFetrich.
Aye.
We have two invoices from, from the project. We have one for the main water line replacement project for Barton and La Judas for one thousand one hundred and fifty-four fifty. And we have one for the wastewater treatment plant disinfectant improvements for Barton and La Judas, three hundred and twenty dollar, thirty, three thirty-two fifty.
We have a motion to, uh, these should probably be done separately, may I have a motion for the water line replacement project? In a second?
Second.
Any questions on this? Roll call.
Trustee Tremblay.
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Herzog.
Aye.
Mayor McFetrich.
Aye. And may I have a motion for the wastewater treatment plant?
So move.
In a second?
Second.
Any discussions? Roll call.
Trustee Tremblay.
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Herzog.
Aye.
Mayor McFetrich.
Aye. Okay. Report from the superintendent, we have Mike's report. They worked a lot on all of that snow removal. Took a really long time. Any comments or questions, anything you want me to share with Mike?
I just, I just have a question as I'm looking at this, um subsurface mapping?
I'm looking at that too.
Yeah, so. What is that?
So it's not gonna be diamond mapping. It's going to be subsurface, it's kind of the same, but it's a different.
Company?
Yeah.
So we're gonna pay a different company?
No, it's gonna be the same price.
But it's a different company?
But it's a different, it's a different division.
It's, it is still diamond mapping, but it's a different version of it, I think, it's, it's a.
Yeah, he was trying to explain it to us today.
You don't have to dig as far to get diamonds. It's just below the surface.
Right. So like I map my underground utilities using my new locator.
But I thought diamond mapping did that.
Yeah.
Yeah, he, I remember him trying to explain that.
Yeah, you'd have to, yeah.
It's diamond mapping, we buy it through RAFA, right? Right, right.
Yes.
Right?
Yeah.
And it's just, it's a little different from the one we had, but it's, it's not, he doesn't really have to change anything and he's got already programmed, programmed in there. He'd have to explain more.
He, he's gonna have to explain it because the town also works with us, so.
Yeah, yeah, it's, yeah, it's something, but it's basically like the same diamond map, it's not diamond mapping, it's subsurface mapping, but it's something different, it's. Same but different, I guess, I don't know.
My question is. Why aren't we not using diamond mapping for that?
I'd have to ask him to explain this, I don't know, maybe it doesn't do something that it, he needs it to do, I don't know, but I.
Well, I mean, just based on what it wrote, it looks like it has something to do with the new locator, the one that we.
That we just purchased.
Two months ago, two months ago. If that's like built into it, I mean, I wouldn't be surprised, but yeah, I do agree that.
So, how about I talk to him tomorrow and send you all an email and CCU. So we know what's, what it, what the difference is.
Yeah.
And why it has to be done. Does that sound okay?
Yeah.
Alright, so I'll send, I'll send that out. Once I understand. Just have to write myself a note here. So, what is it, subsurface?
Because it sounds like it's going to be above what we're already paying Rafa.
It's gonna be the same price.
It says it'll match.
It's the same price.
Yeah.
So are we not using Rafa anymore?
Well, diamond mapping goes through Rafa.
Right, I understand that.
So it won't be diamond mapping, it'll be subsurface mapping.
Still through Rafa.
Yeah. I'm, I'm thinking that that's, okay.
Oh, okay. Okay, I, I will find that out.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, right, okay.
He did talk about it.
Yeah, he did.
I don't remember the details.
I don't, I don't remember, I just don't remember this, yeah. I'll, I'll ask him tomorrow to, and then I'll send that out to everyone. Yeah. I'm upset. Okay, let's see here, any other questions on the superintendent's report? Alright. Uh, correspondence please.
Um, correspondence Champlain Fire District regarding purchases fire station. Correspondence to Robert Pulsford regarding longevity pay and health insurance premium. Correspondence from Champlain Fire District regarding sale of fire station to the village.
Okay. So we already had our new business from Danny and Renee. Old business, we have purchase of the fire station. Just going back to their response letter. Said they're going to have a reappraisal done. When we receive an updated, we'll let you know, and I have not heard anything yet. So I think we just table this for now. Anyone have any other comments on that? Uh, local law number one. So, we need a, um, we need a motion to, to pass this now that we've had our public hearing. This is the tax cap override. We have a motion.
So move.
In a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Okay, on the record, this has to be a roll call vote, so.
Trustee Tremblay.
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Herzog.
Aye.
Mayor McFetrich.
Aye. Is there anything else to come before the board?
You gonna touch on anything about the budget?
I'm, I'm, I, we can, I didn't know if anyone had brought up any thing else, I mean, after you, you plugged in the numbers.
Yeah, because this has to come in April. To pass the budget.
Right. I mean.
I don't know if anybody has any questions, um.
I think the only thing. Might be the. The suggested sewer rates, that's not, not talking about the general, but the adjusted sewer rates and, and we didn't really talk about the water rates. So. I mean, we could schedule another meeting or we can talk about it now, I don't know if you.
I think we need to schedule another meeting.
Well, what's, what's the board think then?
So, well, just, just, just to recap, um, so last year when we did our budget, our general fund. What we, our appropriated fund balance was forty-six thousand eight eighty-two, this year it's forty-eight thousand nine oh nine. So it's, it's less than two thousand dollar difference.
Which is pretty good.
Yes, yes, which, which we. I think we can deal with that. The water. Unfortunately, um, last year was thirty-six thousand eight hundred and this year it's fifty-three thousand three hundred. We, Mary and I went through that with what the big difference is. Some of it is raises, we also have a big jump in electricity costs. There's, I, I don't know, you can't. You can't cut.
There's nothing we can cut there.
There's nothing, and it's. So therefore it's, you know, I mean, it's fifty-three thousand, I mean, the years recently before that was sixty thousand that we, you know, had for fund balance on. To balance the budget, I think we can. We can get by with that.
Get by with it for one, for one.
For another year, I mean, we, we raised rates last year, we hate to have to, you know. Because we're gonna have to raise sewer rates.
The sewer rates are.
Because unfortunately, we had to add that payment, that fifty thousand payment. For the bond into this year.
Yeah.
So. But, last year it was fifty-seven, well, just about fifty-eight thousand, and this year it's seventy thousand six hundred, so it's twelve thousand dollars. Sewer is. Sewer, sewer, I mean, they're still working on that project, hopefully that's done very soon.
Yeah.
Maybe we can start taking some more sludge just by some of that difference.
Have to.
But, um, if. We, we have to raise the rates, it's still gonna be, because we, what we did was if we put fifty thousand in the rates. And then we had fifty thousand for the bond, then it's still gonna be the fifty-eight. Last year and then seventy this year, so. But I think our fund balance and some of our fund balance in sewer, that, um, we actually have some money left in there that we could justify that payment if we needed to part of it.
Well, let's, let's go back to water, so we went from, from what, third, what'd you say, third, something to fifty-seven?
Thirty-eight to fifty-three?
Thirty-six to fifty. Or is it thirty-six eight to fifty-three?
Oh, thirty-six eight to fifty-three.
Alright. So, what's the, what's the board think? Raise the rates, I know Kim and I have talked a little bit about it.
Well, I'm, I'm just looking at. How this sheet, how changes will affect users squarely. So currently we're at.
Is that a sewer though?
A sewer.
Oh, that's sewer.
Yeah.
We have a water.
There's not one for water.
No, yeah, I'm gonna hear you.
We haven't done one for water, but I guess my, my first question is, should we, should we look at raising the rates slightly? If, yes.
We are a business.
It's, it's a pretty big increase in, in what we're using out of our fund balance, but.
But we can't continue to do that.
No, we can't, we, we can't continue to do that.
So if we don't. Continue to increase our rates.
It would be a really big jump, is what will happen, there'll be a really big jump in rates probably.
Was it last year we did water?
We did water last year.
And what, what, I don't have that with me because that's in my water board report.
Did it go from six twenty-five to seven?
Yes. Sewer at seven?
It's at seven, I believe. If I remember that right.
For water.
Mm-hmm, for water.
And the year before it was, we raised sewer rates before, we had four hours. Cause it went from four eighty to.
Six, maybe.
Ten six, no?
Yeah, six, four eighty to six.
We have tried to alternate them just so they're not hit with both. Even though it appears on one bill and probably people don't even notice, they just know it's increased.
They come in and ask.
Yeah.
So.
So. Well, my feeling, as much as I hate to see my own personal bills go up, that if we don't keep chipping away at this a little bit every year on both of them, we're gonna end up in trouble.
What did the rest of you think?
Could you explain the, was it, said sludge or, or what was, what is?
Outside people, like the haulers, you know, the people go to the houses and they pick up their, then they drop it in our sewer. And then we charge them so much.
So we, we, we process it for them, so they, they pay a fee for us to process it.
And we did that.
A few years ago. Bring in, we brought in a lot.
We, we were doing wire at the time.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that was our big, yeah. And then we had a few haulers and then we decided to redo the plant and then we stopped, stopped it altogether.
It's a big loss of income for us.
I mean, even if we could get twenty thousand dollars, you know, that's a big.
Because didn't we used to be close to a hundred?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Yeah, it was a huge loss.
Yeah. Okay, let's go back to water. Let's go back to water.
So that's, but that's sewage though.
That's sewage.
So, yeah, so.
So back to water.
But there's no guarantees on that either, what you're gonna get.
No, but if you.
Hopefully we do.
No, but if you notice in our budget every year, we put that money in there and then we never get it.
Right.
It, the revenue, you know what I mean? It's just like a.
We gotta put our stuff out there.
Why is it there, you know? So then if it wasn't there, then you would really have to increase your rates even more.
So we really have to get it out there that we're back in business from that.
Yep.
Do. So what would we need to raise the water rate by?
I know, you can't just do that.
I can't say, there's so, so many factors involved. Do you want to raise rates?
If you.
So do you wanna raise rates themselves or combination of two things?
Twenty-five or seven fifty, I don't know, does twenty-five cents or fifty cents help us much?
Residential it will because there's so many more people residential. But do you also want to increase commercial by another, like the same amount or more? I mean, it's. I guess we'll have to do some, there's a lot of.
I think we're gonna have to do some calculating on this.
But I think if we're gonna raise residential, then we need to raise, raise commercial as well.
That's only fair.
Yeah, well, we need to get this back up.
Yeah, yeah.
And how much? By a dollar amount, how much are you looking at? That helps me.
Would, could you do, oh, you mean, uh.
Like, are we looking for twenty thousand or twenty-five or fifty or forty?
Well, could you do something, Mary, similar to what you did with the sewer sheet that you did? Because I found that very helpful.
I can, that's right, yeah, I can do that, I just really need to know, like, a dollar amount, a bottom line, what are we looking at?
So.
Because it, it takes a lot of.
I'm sure it is a lot of finessing.
Twenty-five cents, uh, for the. Little base rate, additional.
Okay. Or the water.
Well, could you do it also with fifty cents?
So, so, okay, yeah, okay, I understand what you're asking, Mary, did, okay, so, so what is the bottom line? How much more income do we want to raise to cut that, to cut that fund balance amount in? Another ten?
Say we wanna raise another, I don't know, say we wanna go to forty-five thousand?
So eight thousand off?
Yeah.
Or a ten thousand, somewhere around there, eight, ten thousand?
Yeah. What, do you know what our current service charge is?
Thirty-seven thirty.
Thirty-seven for water and thirty-seven fifty for sewer, I think.
Per quarter.
Per quarters.
And are there minimums? Do we have them?
Commercials have the minimums and that's where I worked around those, those.
I love the sheet that you did for the sewer, it's great. So if we're at thirty-seven fifty, could you see what it did if we raised it to forty?
And keep in mind that those numbers for sewer, I, I increased by ten dollars a quarter. For residential as well.
Right. Yeah, as, as I'm looking at them. I just, I, I, I've said it many times, if we, if we don't do this yearly. Because the cost of everything goes up, nothing goes down.
Oh, no.
So if we don't, if we don't chip, chip, chip away every year and do little increases. I know, then it's a really big one. Yeah. Which is really hard. Yeah, so I, I would rather, I mean, I don't like seeing the bill come in my mail any more than anyone else, but it is a cost of doing business. Yeah, we'll just look at some different scenarios and then add it, add it to what the proposed sewer increase would be and see, see how big it is. And it means we're gonna have to have another meeting. This is too important, I mean, we have to sit down again.
Yeah, because then our next meeting is the first Monday in April.
Yes, don't forget the, the April meeting is, is early because of, um, the organizational meeting. So seventh.
Yep.
Yeah. So would.
Yeah, because we'll have to, um, get our budget all together.
Yeah.
Before that meeting.
So if we met in a week or so?
Do a budget survey.
I think that's like the word cancellation.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
So if we met in a week or so? It'd be all right, right?
We should be able to.
I don't have the, I guess I could. I can use this. Can't wonder. The twenty, well, is the tenth.
Long as it's not the twentieth.
Twenty-fourth, two weeks? What'd you say, William?
Long as it's not the twentieth.
March then?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a.
The twenty-fourth is two weeks. Is that too far out?
What day?
The twenty-fourth is two weeks, on, on Monday, is that too far out?
Doesn't have to be Monday.
Doesn't have to be.
Doesn't have to be Monday. Wednesdays are not good for me. Tuesdays and Wednesdays are not good for me.
How about Thursday night?
Like the.
Not the, not the twentieth?
Yeah, the twentieth.
And the twenty-seventh puts you.
Pretty close.
Pretty close, yeah. Is a week too tight for you, Mary, to get that information together?
What do you say, no Tuesday, no Wednesday?
Yeah, I can do that.
Kim said no Tuesday, no Wednesday.
Tuesdays and Wednesdays are not good.
Monday's good, I can, I can.
Can you do Monday?
Yeah, I do Monday, tw- the twenty-fourth.
Is that fine with everyone?
As, as long as it gives Mary enough time to do what she needs to do and enough time for.
Two weeks is better than a week, yes.
What time? I'm gonna do it early.
Yes.
Yes.
What time?
Five thirty.
Five thirty works.
Or early? Or five?
Five works for me too.
I could, yeah, it's.
Can you do five, Joel?
Yep, that would be preferable.
Is five okay? Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I would just assume it'd meet earlier.
I'd do anything to tell you, nobody. Get home, get started. Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Glad we discussed this.
Yes. Anything else? Motion to adjourn.
So move.
In a second. Call a favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, everyone.